Wait, wait, wait. Wait, wait. Time for your back. Do you need a back? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, right. Should I go to one?
Where is the... The people who flew from Ghana, Europe? Please make a way of food. If you are here, thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Just a minute. Just a little bit more. Uh, give us that. Chill out. You want to do a record? No, come back. I'm gonna have to do something. Yes, we're gonna follow you here too. I think I'm on your face.
Be crying tomorrow.
The arrival of his excellency Joseph Yomaboka, Senior President of the Republic of Liberia.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Liberia Radio Television Network. We are live here at the presidential town hall meeting for President Joseph Yomaboka. And the president of Liberia is currently arriving. And we will bring you live coverage of this town hall meetings. All of the questions and response from the president. So stay with us and we will continue to keep it moving.
Hello, Liberia. Hello, Liberians. Hello, Liberians. Hello, Liberians. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we'll be steady and just sing our national anthem.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Long live Liberia!
Thank you. You may be seated.
Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, Madam First Lady, distinguished officials of government, Dr. Dunn, our partners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Jerome Anasas, Chief Minister, Counselor of President Public Affairs, Embassy of Liberia in Washington DC. My ambassador, Dr. Konte. Want to say welcome to this presidential town hall meeting. This engagement is set so that you directly talk to the Father and Son. We will entertain questions. Our microphones will be controlled. We will have cards for questions to be written. The ground rules will be delivered as the program continues. Questions only. Premises for now are forbidden. If you have a question, directly ask the question. Ladies and gentlemen, because God is the supreme architect of the universe, I'm obliged to welcome to this podium Reverend Oliver Lloyd to give us our invocation.
Let us all stand. With hearts and hands our country calls defending, we meet before we rather all return day. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we commit this moment to you, Lord, and our president, and the words and wisdom that will be shared in these walls. Bless our nation. Bless our strides and great success, oh God, to the Republic of Liberia. We give you praise and glory for the opportunity that we as a community have today to interact and exchange with our president and element of Liberia. They be blessed and then we find prosperity in these exchanges. In Jesus' name I pray.
This town hall will be officiated alongside Mr. Reverend Monroe Weeks. Will help me, he will give you the ground rules for our discussions today. We will now welcome to the microphone Councilwoman Wallah Blighé.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, my fellow Liberians. I just want to say welcome here, President Joseph Yomaboka. Thank you so much for coming to Prince George's County. I just want to say, as the only Liberian African elected official here in the region, I've been in office for three years now. And thank you many of you all for pushing, the Liberian community pushed for me to be in this seat. But I said, once I come here, if the president comes near Washington DC, you must visit me in Prince George's County. I just want to first of all thank our pastor here, Pastor Kobe. Pastor Somhak Kobe, we are in the house of Redeemer's Chapel. When I called Pastor Kobe, he immediately opened up and said, "You can host this here." I said, "We want to make sure if the president is here, I would like him to come to my county that I serve, Prince George's County." And Pastor Kobe, are you here? I would like you to come up and everybody can see you. Thank you so much for opening your doors to my community, to my president, to the people here of Liberia. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are in a beautiful facility and we appreciate you for what you've done. So thank you. I just want to say Prince George's County is a home of thousands of Liberians. And of course, we have over 10,000 Liberians in this region. It is beautiful to have this and host this in a place that welcomes our African community. We are in a home of a church that has thousands of Africans. The African immigrant community has been the driver of the economy in this region. And I just want to announce a couple of things that I did state yesterday. But making sure, as we here at this town hall, we've been talking about the trade in Liberia. This is about economic development. Well, we had this amazing Liberian diaspora conference. And I do want to thank the president for putting that together and engaging diaspora community. We are ready to give back to Mama Liberia. This is what we want to do and you've opened up the way for us to do it. Prince George's County is going to Liberia in January. And I want to make sure we are bringing trade and investment to Liberia. And I've been working with Ambassador Konte. Thank you so much for working with me. And I also would like to recognize Michael Roy, Deputy Secretary of State for the State of Maryland. Can you stand up? Welcome. Thank you so much for your work because right now there is going to be an announcement soon. If you don't mind, I'm going to throw the word out there. We are doing the first sister nation relationship between the Republic of Liberia and the entire state of Maryland. And in that agreement, we are going to be focusing on trade. This is trade. This is about agriculture. This is about investment. And so this is so many things that we can do. We are connecting our ports, from the port of Baltimore to the port in Liberia. We are connecting universities, from University of Liberia to University of Maryland. We are connected. We are going to be the first. And we are going to set the stage that people will see that we should use a sister city or sister nation relationship, maximize it. Let's use it. Let's let our diaspora lead that effort. Who's going to be part of that effort? So I just want to thank you. I want also recognize Leganty Business Premier, stand up. They actually helped us pay to make sure that we had this venue, to make sure that you are all comfortable here. Remi Douille, can you please stand up? Thank you so much. So welcome. I just want to thank you all so much. Thank you Reverend Dunn. Thank you Reverend Weeks for all you've done. Welcome to Prince George's County and I look forward to this amazing town hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wallah. She make a lot of things to woo. Wallah, thank you very much. So it is clear, we got this hall, it's not government's money. It's all our work. So let's give another big round of applause. Thank you. And applaud the men who worked so assiduously to make sure this gathering was made possible. From the office of the president, ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome the exuberant, young, energetic, never say no, can't take no according to the president, the honorable Erasmus Woolens. Erasmus, President of the Diaspora. More money. Most support. Have it together. Most support. I will answer when I was dancing and I was screaming for most support that the region want. His Excellency, the mother of our nation, cabinet ministers here present. My leader, my leader, the man who make this possible. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The co-chair, the president advisor, the ambassador who's hosting this first annual Diaspora Conference in the United States, honor your leadership. Thank you. Elected officials here from the United States. And our own sister, please stand. She's a Liberian. She's elected. Please stand up for her. We are proud of you. Thank you. Members of the press, my most supporters. Your president, thank you. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen. And I have the tribe over there. Please stand. Let it pursue you. Come. You're come. You're pleased come. So you see the tribe? Come. Come. Time for them, please. Give it up for them. I will tell you. They put themselves together, from the South Indian tribe, to recruit African Americans to Liberia. Give it up for them, people. Give it up for them. Give it up for them. And some of them have already applied for the citizenship. Some of them have already obtained their resident permit. And in December, some of them will be receiving their official citizenship for the first time. What is it? Thank you for coming as we collaborate on some of the other things we talked about on how to strengthen most support. Thank you very much. We have this. That being said, I just want to say thank you to members of the diaspora community. I told somebody last night, I said, "We were walking in the dark and it's like we were looking for light and we wouldn't find it." And the light came on when His Excellency said, "Oh." Hello? And when we saw the light, we all just came together and started running to the light. And because we saw that light, it was the birth of the official diaspora engagement. And now we are seeing the light, we all need to keep the torch on so we can get most support. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Erasmus Woolens. We now have a musical and artistic presentation. After which we'll have the recognition of our presidential intro ranch. Okay. A great musical ambassador who served our country for many years. She views her voice to unite and reconcile. She views her voice to raise souls for Christ. Words alone are just not adequate to describe how super fantabulous this lady is. Her voice is so melodious. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the honor to welcome to this microphone Ambassador Maroon Nissah.
Praise the Lord. Hello, Liberians. His Excellency, President Joseph Yomaboka. And my mother, First Lady, I salute you. All protocols observed. I am so glad to be here today. This is historic and I'm glad that I can be a part right now. I've been away from Liberia. I love Liberia. I've been in Liberia all my life. But circumstances forced me out of Liberia because I lost my only child, which was devastating. And I've been away from Liberia for 14 years. And this year, I'm going back to Liberia. And not just going back, I have a children hospital project and we having this concert at the SKD Sports Complex. You are all invited. It's going to be on November 29th. It's going to be super glorious. I look forward to seeing all of you there. Amen. Let's go. Hallelujah. Sweetland of every team, outside, we brought this light to you, I am shining, prospering in Africa, yeah, world! Sweetland of liberty, oh, outside, we brought this light to you, I am shining, prospering in Africa, yeah, world! We have our Liberians in the house, come around, we all need to let go of pride! Sweetland of every team, outside, you are shining, prospering in Africa, yeah, world! Sweetland of every team, outside, you are shining, prospering in Africa, yeah, world! You are the champion, you are the champion, you are the champion, you are the champion, oh, Liberia, you are the champion, you are the champion, you are the champion, oh, Liberia, you are the champion, come on, let me shine, come on! Sweetland of every team, outside, you are shining, prospering in Africa, yeah, world! Sweetland of every team, outside, you are shining, prospering in Africa, yeah, world! Come on, Liberians, come on, come on, and it's time for us, come to Liberia, let's see your eyes in the sun, hallelujah, come on! You are the champion, you are the champion, you are the champion, oh, Liberia, you are the champion, oh, Liberia, you are the champion, oh, 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 you are the champion,
I told you, another big round of applause for Ambassador Nissir. So spiritually uplifting, we can have her sing all day, right? Okay, maybe we all talk back on the second one? Alright, we need God, our country has survived one hundred and seventy-eight years, nothing but through the mercy and the grace of God. Ladies and gentlemen, because our young people are so important in the followed march of our country, the organizers of this program have decided to give them a voice. And so, I have the honor to welcome Mr. Alfonso Samokai and Nix Wright, Liberia youth representatives, to give us a short presentation. People, eh, Alfonso Samokai and Nix Wright, thank you, the future of our country.
Thank you all for having me. Happy people do we all! I like to hear, thank you all for being here, of course, thank you, Excellency, Mr. President, uh, Boycott for being, for having us as well, I am representing the youth of Diaspora, um, and of course, I also would give you a special first name, I'm here with the white chair of GBAA. Today we got to confront two critical challenges that threaten the soul of our nation, the growing crisis of government abuse, and the silent yet devastating consequences of sexual violence. These issues not only destroy lives, but also weaken the very foundation upon which we hope to build a prosperous Liberia. First, let's reflect on the reality of drug abuse in our country. According to reports, nearly two in every ten Liberian youth are using narcotic substance abuse. In Moroya alone, there may be as many as a hundred thousand drug users out of the population of one point five million. Nationwide, the government has identified more than forty-seven thousand active youths using substances right now, such as Kush and other narcotics. Our communities are seeing too many young people fall victims to harmful substances. These drugs rob our youth of their future, leaving families broken and our communities unstable. What should be a leader of generations, innovators, and educators have now become weakened by addiction. Equally as urgent, we are plagued with sexual violence within our country. Rape is not just a crime against one individual, it is a wound against the society. Liberia is a very young country, if you guys may not know, sixty-three percent of our population is under the age of twenty-five, yet that is the group that suffers the most sexual violence. Too many young men and women suffer in silence, carrying trauma that affects the ability to thrive. It's just what they believe, their trust and hope, we cannot look away and we may not remain silent. I hear a lot of my constituents speak about, we always talking, we're always talking, where's the implementation, where's the action? There's hope, we are not just the future of Liberia, we are the presence, we are the youth. We must rise as advocates and educators, and protect one another. So you may ask, what can we do? First, we can start by providing vocational training on ground and online. Technology connects us in a way that we have never seen before. We can find mentorship programs, fund initiatives, and of course, youth exchange programs, as Councilwoman has said, thank you so much, um, for creating that initiative, but together we can build a strong future that carries our nation forward. But most importantly, we must demand accountability. Law against rape and drug trafficking must be enforced, without faith and without fear. Communities must break the silence of the shame of sexual assault and drug addiction and replace it with protection and equal justice. My fellow youth, Liberia's story is not the story of heartbreak, is not the story of broken dreams, but is a story of resilience, the story that we are keep on going, the story that we will ride, we will build, and we are determined to heal. The time for action is now, and if our commitment with ourselves and our hearts and our minds and with our hands, we can transform the nation of Liberia. Together, we must rise, not trapped by drugs and not trapped by sexual violence, and wherever Liberian have a chance, we will thrive. Thank you so much, and of course, thank you to the world for having us. And I would like to thank my culture, Mr. Alfonso Samokai.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I love culture and tradition, so I ask everybody to join me. Ya, ya! Ya, ya! Bati o, bati! Bati o, bati! Alright, that's my Liberian people, and that's how we do it. Before I begin, let me do a quick roll call. If you find yourself coming from this background, your town, and your ethnicity, I need you to make some noise. To my Ola Kisi people, I am with y'all. To my Kua, AKA Bela, De, Baso, Brego, Thro, Sako, Kri, D, Thro, I am with y'all. To my Va, Da, AKA Yo, Mano, Pele, Mo Ma, Vani, Mendu, Manika, and Kula, I am with y'all. And no matter the race, religion, or creed, I am with you all. Liberia is a land of hospitality and enjoyment, and I'm pretty sure every one of y'all know that, but Liberia is also a nation that arises in the face of injustice and civil unrest. We have proven our strength as freedom fighters and liberators, whether in assisting, assisting other nations to achieve sovereignty, uniting Africa through the African Union and Akerwaz, are now gaining a non-permanence seat on the United Nations Security Council to play a stronger role in global affairs. So when people ask me, what does it mean to be Liberian? I told them, to be Liberian is to be a liberator and a freedom fighter. So I pray that we all embrace this belief and live by it. Tonight, I first give thanks to the Mosai for bringing us together, I thank the organizers of this event, and extend my greetings to the wonderful people of the Republic of Liberia. My name is Alfonso Samokai, but within my culture, I go by Fajasna Witsi-Samokai. I am the Youth Chair for the Liberian Association of Pennsylvania. Today, I stand with my lovely sisters Anushka Wright, Adress Yalid, and my brothers Zainour, Amaduner, Prince Masaquire, Raymond Sharif, and Oliver Kokoli Jr. Okay, under the leadership of Madam President Sayondi Kofa, I have the honor to speak, uh, on the behalf of the youth in the Diaspora. We were asked to address the issue of rape, violence, and drug epidemic plaguing our nation, but my sister Nix Wright already spoke powerfully on this, but I would like to add, uh, it is shameful that rape cases remain alarmingly high in our Liberian culture. We often say we are what our father is, but we must also remember our mothers are the physical representation of God. Our mothers are able to bring forth life, they are the first teachers of the home, our women hold sacred roles in our culture, yet our daughters, our sisters, and cousins continue to endure these canoe- and acts. How long will this last? How long must young girls, our future mothers and cultural custodians, suffer in silence? And let's not forget young boys who also experience sexual assault. Who among us would want to descend from people like this? None of us. On the issue of drugs, we know Liberia does not produce narcotics at all, but our weak governance and foreign-controlled shipment registry dating back to Tubman open-door policy have left us vulnerable to trafficking. Yes, we applaud community members for reporting local dealers, but if the government of Liberia is serious and must reform and reclaim control of such institutions, this would strike at the root of the problem, not just the branches. A strong anti-drug policy is vital for the development, the youth are the backbone of this nation, if drugs consume them, Liberia has no future at all. So, I would like to shift, because I don't want to be too redundant at all, but I just want to say to our, uh, delegates, uh, officials, and Mr. President, Achanho Nyo. Welcome to London Mahulu, as we say in English, land of the Englishman, alright? We often like to think of America as a mountain park where different people can come and benefit, but follow, the rules change for those of us coming from the continent, America doesn't care whether you're Pele or you're Baso, you're Nigerian or you're Kenyan, as long as you're black, we all face systematic racism within this country. We know the history, this nation enslaved our fellow Africans and worked into the bone. From that struggle came our Congo brothers and sisters who left America and returned home to establish Liberia, yet, up until today, it is sad that the civil war has claimed so many lives. Even more ironic is how the old slogan, Congo versus Native, which was one used to divide us, has now forced many of us back in the Diaspora to the very big plantation our founders tried to escape. But as my father always told me, he said, every disappointment is a blessing, so we as Liberians, whether born at home or abroad, now have the opportunity to learn from the societies which we live in and apply that knowledge to build a stronger Liberia. Right now, however, the job market is tough, inflation has made food and housing harder to afford, and under Trump administration, we have seen the elimination of, uh, DEI programs, rollbacks of fair housing regulation, and changes in immigration policy, all of which have hit the middle and lower classes hardest. And it is within the classes that most of us, as black people and as Liberian in America, find ourselves. So, this is why, Mr. President, I must address something you said earlier this year. You stated, if you don't come back home to build your country, like your business, because you also think now, continually in the States for summer, thinking you're enjoying life. Now, in our culture, I'll just rarely apologize when they rub us the wrong way, but they do show care, and they do that by patent our tax and, uh, pushing us forward as a younger generation. So I am not asking for apology on the behalf of our parents, but I ask instead they show us care by ensuring their policies are properly implemented and that those kind of young ones are held accountable. There is a joke they like to use when it comes to our grandfather, which is the Park Car analogy, but I've seen you moving, Mr. President, and if you continue listening to us, if you continue listening to us, you can be a bulldozer pushing through all the obstacle that holds green Liberian empire. Liberia has some of the best policies on paper, but implementation and executions remain our greatest weakness. Too often petitions are ignored, and the same leaders are recycled again and again and again, but for our leader, he has years of experience, and some of the policies we wanted to touch on, and I'll make this very quick, uh, the rule of the Diaspora, we know that over eight hundred million dollars are sent back home, we want our money to be protected, we want to see development on the land, we also know that, uh, you have passed that dual citizenship, citizenship policy, but at the same time too, for those of us that go back home, that live back home, and always work to develop the nation, we also like to join the government as well, so we can be, make some great impacts. Next, I would like to hit, that education and workforce development, uh, we need STEAM programs, STEAM as in science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. The local Liberian today, they go back home, they are entrepreneurs, they are farmers, they are technicians, they do things on ground, so by having STEAM, promoting STEAM, or in promoting trade, we can be able to build our country. Uh, when it comes to the healthcare reform, we have multiple people that work in the health field that will be able to go back home and do the work. Uh, Mr. President, I don't want to hold you long, but I urge you to settle, increase surveillance, that's, the last thing I'm gonna say is, increase surveillance. The increased civilian, true, uh, citizens reporting that if you set up, this, this will strengthen accountability to close the gaps in governance. Uh, final part, to the youth of Liberia, we are the majority, our time is now, but we must ask ourselves, what is the Liberian dream? To lead or to build? True nation building takes time, sacrifice, and organization, faithful outward is dead, and God does not change. Faithful outward is dead and God does not change the condition of people until they change it for themselves. So look around, our artists, designers, entrepreneurs and non-entrepreneurs are vital. Each of you are a revolutionary in your own right. I will close, uh, with the word of the late Asada Shakur on her soul, rest in peace. Black revolutionaries do not drop from the moon, we are created by our conditions, shaped by our oppression. We are made manufacturing droves in the ghetto streets. With that being said, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, the young people of Liberia. Yes. Thank you. And the rest of your message, the president will receive it. What? I meant two minutes, I was small two minutes. No, the ball won't speak its heart. Hey, if you are left with me, without time constraint, I will allow you to talk, right? Because you're going to be careful with those people because they're the future of our country, revolutioners. And if they have a lot to talk, let them talk, right? Let them vent, now is the time for us to listen. And like he said, the president is not parked, he's a bulldozer, right? And we give him a big round of applause again. And our ladies and gentlemen, I have to order the welcome to this microphone. Um, someone who's going to introduce our government officials present, we did not do that in full. And so the illustrious Director General of the Liberian Cabinet is Mr. Nataniel Kowabo. I want to welcome you to this microphone. And there's one word all Liberians call the same, ponder. Think about that. I'll come back.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Liberians here. Um, what the President took office, he said, there'll be no business as usual. And he also said that his officials that he's going to appoint will not wear their titles on their sleeves, but that he should deliver. And true to his word, he had been able to put a great corp of ministers and officials of government who are delivering. And some of them are here. I'm just going to introduce some, few. Uh, we don't have a full complement of those who accompany the president on this trip. And those who are here, I'll introduce to you in no particular order. We have with us, of course, young man, the Ambassador of Liberia to the United States, Dr. Alhassa Konte, the president representative, Mr. Konte. Um, as you know, Liberia has the new development plan called the AAID aid, which is the Agenda, Arrest Agenda for Inclusive Development. And the spearhead of that plan is no other but the Minister of Finance and Development Planning, Mr. Augustin K. Nafwa. And we also have a fighter, someone who is always fighting for the kids of in Liberia, for them to have the best of education. As you know, our educational system was in the dog drugs until we came to power. And the president was wise enough to appoint the generic and energetic Dr. Tassu Emjala, Minister of Education. Um, you've been hearing the voice of the government. Uh, he has no punches. And I'm pleased to now introduce to you the Minister of Information, Jervin N'Pia. We also have on stage the lady who makes sure that those doing business in Liberia do business in a fair and appropriate way. And it's my pleasure to introduce the Minister of Commerce, Magdalena Osain. We also have key advisors to the president who accompany him on the trip. And I will begin by introducing the experienced Professor, Dr. Augustine Connor, Senior Advisor to the President. You know, um, every now and then the president will like to hear from other voices, hear other voices in the, in the house, especially when it comes to the economy. So we have accompanying the president on the strip, one of his economic advisors. And that is the Senior Economic Advisor, Mr. Sahaj Joni. Also here with us, and of course, she's no one to be introduced because she's introduced herself over the last year and a half. I would like to recognize the president's political advisor, Madame Magdela Kubar. Also in the house, accompanying the president is his legal advisor. Um, Mr. The advisor has been receiving some punches in the last year because of his strong stance, which has been quite appropriate in terms of, you know, guiding the president on a lot of legal issues and constitutional issues. And that is no one but Counselor Supercater, advisor, legal advisor to the president. In this hall is also the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency Executive Director. Uh, he's been busy, he was very busy with, at the UN, having several meetings and making sure that I benefit from the dividends from the policies that we instituted in terms of climate change. There is no other but Dr. Emmanuel Uwe Yakalo. We also have the Deputy Minister of Information, Deputy Minister of Public Affairs, Attorney General of the State, Mr. Anthony Kessel. And we also have with us a familiar face, you always see her on social media feeds, um, the president's press secretary, Kula N'Nfufan. And of course, the hardworking Chief of Protocol, Madame Antoinette Waller. Also with us is the Deputy Chief of Protocol, Madame Winnie Friend, the Sheer, Elisa Mar. And there are many more in the hall that I've not seen, but have accompanied the president on this trip. And ladies and gentlemen, I will ask you to extend a hand of applause for your hard work. So with that, I would like to say thank you so much for coming and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nataniel Kowabo, Director General of the Liberian Cabinet. A Liberian is smitting political headlines in the state of Virginia. She's running to become a governor and she's in the house. May we recognize Madame Donald Charles. Donald Charles. They say if your dreams don't scare you, they are not big enough, right? And I am told she is the daughter of one of Liberia's most go-getting female. She doesn't take no for an answer like Erasmus. Imagine the name, do you remember? That female that is the, the general. She's the daughter of Madame Mary Bro. So you see, they say do things so that even if you are not around, the things that you do will speak for you. I want to recognize Emmanuel de Canova is the physician to the president, good friend of mine. And like I said, there is one word, Professor Connor, if I may borrow from you, there is one word that every tribe in Liberia calls the same. That thread that unites us is a word. Every tribe, Mandingo, Pele, Baso, Va, Gribbo, they call that word the same. Can I get a guess from the audience? Oh my God. Yeah. That word is B U T. Butt. And how do the Pele people call it? Ke. How do the Gribbo call it? And how do the Baso people call it? Every. So I've taught you something that unites us as a people, that thread that binds us. So Liberia, once a Liberian, remember the word ke. Ladies and gentlemen, now we will have, um, the meat of our program is about to commence. The president will be speaking, then we'll be answering the questions and, um, Reverend Monroe will help me do that, um, moderation. But for now, we have, um, a short video, the diaspora office. Well, now let this video roll.
We tell you we've been working, but we're just not talking because we've been talking too much. So we decided not to talk, so we can get more support. Because we want to point to specific actions, things that we have done and things that we do together. We just played that video so you can see it, what we did last year in December. It's a little bit long, the other session was going to show other image with the climaxing of the event with the president, the private dinner in half of everybody for the diaspora and everything else. But also, you saw that one, uh, twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-five, you're not going to Liberia December, your color speech for you. Hello? If you don't care, I'll call a speech for you because you need to cancel, the culture can get more so hot. But thank you so much, Adjre, uh, take it.
Mistress Akumu Yata Waikar, Vice Lady of the Republic of Liberia, Ambassador Alhassa Konte, Liberian Ambassador to the United States of America, distinguished government officials accompanying His Excellency, the President, leaders and organizers of this historic town hall, leaders and members of the various Liberian community organizations, they are present, the clergy, members of the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. May I ask you, all of you in this room, to kindly rise to your feet with a rising hand of applause as I present to you His Excellency Joseph Luma Waikar Sine, our president, our president, our black president of the Republic of Liberia, who well against time, make special remarks, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let me recognize again the members of my delegation here who have already been presented to you. I want to also recognize, of course, the leadership of the country and county, the organizers of this event.
the organizers of this event. We kept on driving, driving and coming, I said, where are we going? You don't answer the question, but we are happy to be here. I like to. I like to stand by saying that, uh, the government officials we see here are here in their numbers, because we have to come to the UN General Assembly. I think there was a very good arrangement in that, uh, when the General Assembly, then we all could come here to this program. So all the ministers, as you know, in the General Assembly, they also have side events that they have to attend, so they are here in their numbers to be able to cover the General Assembly. They want to thank them very well for being here. As I look around here, I see a lot of places that will come a very, very long way. I don't want to call names, because this is America, and almost everyone, even including the ministers, other they were once here as students, but they have lived here, and they have gone back to resettle. Almost everybody here, that to show you how grateful we are to the great United States for being that country, uh, hosted Liberia for many, many years. I don't think Liberians feel they have gone anywhere if they haven't gone to the United States. Just as they don't feel they are eating under, they are eating rice. So we want to thank the great United States for being that partner, that friend, that country that has given chance to our people. I heard the councilman named, uh, Wala Leguey, and I kept on asking, "Leguey?" I had a schoolmate, Alan Leguey, at the College of West Africa, who was a class instructor with Eva the Doc. I said, "Must be some connection," and someone told me, "Alan Leguey's daughter." So let me say it, Marion, thank you very much for, many years ago, you sent us some Liberia would rise, would shine, would prosper. The day is here. You know, what I think that we are, that are doing is to recognize, uh, people who worry about it after the funeral. Uh, sometime last year, the beauty queen in Nigeria, Oprah, with dancing, Oprah dancing, her celebrations of ninth year right there. And we sent somebody there to do an investigation, to honor her, to know that we still lay claim on her, she's from Liberia. Thank you very much, Lady Fungia. So we want to thank you all for this great program. And I want to say that we feel very comfortable here. Monali Jones, thank you, we worked with him many years ago, we worked together in L P M C. He ran away from me, he didn't invite us. And I also had many years, way back, just like a little kid, you know, top of the world, Leno Washington. That's a long, long way to go. But also, we want to say we have our own, uh, daughters here from our children, King Wura, Ramda, and all of the other siblings, but I want to thank you and our own physician at Kenneber. Today, we are here to celebrate this great movement, event, about our diaspora. So I want to say here, first and foremost, it's very gratifying for each of you here for the presence. Today is a testament, an enduring one, the share of Liberians. And I am proud to see many of you personally, because dedicated to contribute to Liberia's growth and development. You've written about, you've met with us, but today, we are talking about Liberians taking Liberia. The theme of reconciliation and healing that we discuss is from the heart. Somebody who here that had gone to Grand Gira, the Re-Berian Dome, they have had a Re-Berian and a Lake Father. And to commemorate also, most of those lives that are taken by our country. And I want to say that it is not the end. We intend to build a memorial park that will remember the two hundred and fifty thousand lives that we lost during the civil war. And also, the people who came to rescue us from our shell. We honor those countries that contributed forces to our civilization. And we intend to take all of them into consideration. They were all Liberians and people came to fight for Liberia. So I believe this is a great moment for Liberians. And, uh, we have a lot of resources we talked about, but I can tell you from the start of Liberia, all the resources they in the hands of foreigners. This is your opportunity to come to take Liberia as a Liberian. You can't claim to be a Liberian when all the best cars are owned by people that have all the best houses. That's your country. And that's why we are there, to make sure that we do everything to take over those things for the benefit of Liberians. Not to the exclusion of people who are Liberians, but there's a traditional thing, we used to say that, "I cannot call you to eat." We usually eat with our hands, and then reunite me, whose hand is this in the void? I bother you. We should take responsibility for our country. And that is why we said that we're going to establish the Diaspora Commission, which I announced yesterday as a crucial step, so that all the skills, the talents, the investment in the country, we can discuss, plan how to do it. I've said to some of our friends who claim that they are the, the, uh, the entry countries, and I said, "We want to make Liberia the destination. Want to make Liberia a country that people want." That's the country that fine American Airlines used to fly from New York, from the road there in just eight hours. There's no kind of place you can do that, eight hours. We want to say that we can become that country again. We can do it. Want to make sure that we encourage you here to be partner, to rebuilding of that country. And we've been spoken about a post-conflict, uh, uh, real estate. There are a lot of abandoned buildings, there, a doghouse, a hotel, a, we can just be there. After war, we have to go back and re-inmission those people. You can go on investing in other new places when you have, the old ones left them down. And who do you expect to do that? They have to be Liberians. Liberia is a very fortunate country, because, uh, even people who go to work there, they get attacked in the country, whether they are ambassador, the peace corps, when our crisis started, were the peace corps from the United States, who were the advocates for Liberia, many, many times before these other groups came. And I am, I remember, uh, when the United States had their memorial service for peace corps that lost their life around the country. I was the one who spoke at the Arlington Cemetery. To continue to cherish the memory of the times when Liberia was that Liberia. But again, this is life, it has happened, but that's not the end of it. That's why we have to appeal to you, all of you, and not just people who are going to Liberia. Liberia has like a home for the free. That means anybody who wants to live there. And so we want to thank you all for your contribution, for all of you in the diaspora, to make Liberia your home, even if you don't live there, but you are investing and improve life there. So we want to thank you very much for this program. Want to thank you for the opportunity to meet. And thank the United States team for giving our people a chance to come here and serve as council people, that is very important. We are very thankful that I'm doing that, and our relationship that we have. So today, I want to thank you all for this program. We had a very good diaspora conference. Today, we had another very durable time, a shadow pact with my special friend and brother. And that brings a very, very beautiful showing. Today, we are here, and we want to say, and we want to say to you, it's been a very good time here, with this walk, and I have enjoyed the time here. I've never been out of the country for this long, and this is for a good purpose. It's to make sure that we bring Liberia back and even make it a better country. As you stay here, you know, there are news, it's all around, that some of you can go to the southeast, to one of the beautiful part of the world, the country. You can go to Grand Gira, you can go to Ngera, because we are opening the way to do that. So, all of you, we cannot continue to sing the Lord's song in strange lands. We should come back. And I want to say to you all, all of you here, most of you are contributed as much before you came. Their ideas, their knowledge, they're needed. We want to rebuild our schools, our educational system. We have to recruit so many people. She was all the way in the, in Delaware, we talked about that. We're looking for good people that inhabit, lead our country. We have good people, but most of them have left, we want to bring them back. Maybe we cannot afford you initially, but that part of the sacrifice, you have to make. So today, I want to thank you all, and I, God bless me, for you, for the change of mind, your commitment to the country, and all for Liberia. We have gone bad, but we can all fix it together, and I know this is the time for it. And I pray that all of you, including our friends, will help us to rebuild our country for the benefit of the intended purpose at a time to make Liberia the home for many, which you know, as I said, even in Africa, here, that's the only country that never deported anybody in mass. That's the country that killed today. Maybe most of the people come here and say they have a green passport, but I can tell you, we had been a country that accepted everybody. But again, uh, today is the time to rebuild, and we need you. Your love, money you send to your family members, that's good enough, continue to do that, but invest in the country. Invest in the country, the program I like more than just your family. So I want to thank you all for this program, and I pray that God will put it into your heart, your desire, to come and work with us. Uh, the Rapha is inviting you for Christmas, uh, for December. We look forward to seeing most of you. And I'm sure you will go just not into Malobia, but you will have the opportunity to go beyond Malobia, some other places that you know. Thank you, God bless you, we look forward to working with you. I know I'm here to, uh, for her to dial up. Fortunately for me, the key players are right here, we'll be able to catch them on the headset. I know they will tell you, everything is good, but you know it yourself. This time, the social media, the social media, the virus too, the virus quite a lot, but the truth, I promise you, they will tell you the truth, because we have nothing to hide. The thing is, we have to tell you the truth, to be able to know where we came from, where we're going, and how we can help. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, um, President Joseph Waka. And so, we'll now go into our engagement with the President. I will have a system in today, it's the George P. Global, Reverend Monroe Weeks, the President National Antamane. He will be assisting me today, and, um, Monroe, just come and help give us some ground rules for good afternoon, Liberia, good afternoon, Liberia and friends. Now, this evening, um, to engage the President in conversation, asking a love statement, just some quick corrections. If you notice, there are mites with people attending each mite. From that aisle, this side, this side, there's two persons to each mite. Here's how we hope to handle it. If you, when your desires ask you, posing a question to the President, it will be done in decency and orderliness. They will man the mites.
When you do want to ask a question, if you're in the middle, they'll ask you to, at that time to come to our end. They will man the mic. You will get to ask a question and they will maintain control of the mic. Do we understand that? You will not hold the mic, just stand there, ask your question. They will retreat from you and you will get to answer accordingly. Is that okay? All hands on the mic declare, so in that manner, we will proceed. I'll be wrong, so here's how we're going to do it. Alton and I will kind of vasticate, we'll go back and forth. He will identify five sections. And then each of our attendants will proceed accordingly. Is that okay? So thank you very much. So may I see, so let's start, did I see your hands here? One question at a time, please no praise, go straight to your question, or we shut the bathroom off, okay? Just have your question to the point, don't give us no history. Okay, so after three questions, the president will address. So if you ask him a question, just be short, no praise, please. Let's begin with the lady on the far right. Right there, yes. Go ahead, yes.
Your excellency, my name is Ari Yassacol. I deeply appreciate your service to our country. I am that lady whose restaurant was destroyed in the height of acid. I really wish and pray that my dinner could be placed here once again, but only if it meets the approval of our beloved and honourable president. After nine years of working in Europe, I returned home for events. A hundred thousand in violence has been lost. I opened a private Liberian-owned restaurant, set up for not in the country. Yes, after five weeks, it was reduced to access. So I ask you, Mr. President, what regards of a person like me or somebody who stepped up fast, return and invest with love, fullest for what my dream destroyed. I hope they ask for admiration and support, not fullest for myself, but for every Liberian who dares to rebuild and invest in our beloved country Liberia. I thank you.
Next question, this rule.
Grace and peace, Leslie Redman, thank you so much for coming. My question is, for African-Americans who want to connect with Liberia, are there going to be any programs like Ghana had the year of returning opportunities for, you know, citizenship and wanting to pour our talents and resources into Liberia?
Thank you. And a question from this candidate.
Mr. President, as an immigrant attorney for twenty years, I've been dealing with a lot of our Liberians facing deportation and I have to face a lot of them in detention, their fears going back home. Or speaking of the diaspora and coming home, are there any strategic planning for the ones that have to leave from here in shackles, going back home, or kind of rehabilitative programs? That's my idea I have, so when I meet with my clients, I'm able to assure them that they're going home and people are going to welcome them home.
Thank you.
The first thing, with a young lady about the, you know, the rest. As you know, I feel very uncomfortable to see Liberians who are on the effort who suffer the counter, that you have suffered. But again, I think we told you the purpose of our coming into leadership in that country. We may not be able to remedy all of the situations, but I can understand your situation. I know you gave me a call. I cannot promise you that you got to resettle or resettle your maybe pay. But I think there's a need for you to be in the country. And through move along, there'll be programs that will help to be able to take care of those kind of situations, to console those people who have sustained losses. But if not, my dear, right now, considering the commitment that I can assure you that this is what we are about to do, to make sure that we make Liberia a country of law and order, a country that we respect and do well. And that you'll be able to discuss those kind of matters in a way you will see, you see the whole country united for one individual. And I can assure you what we do if you're right in Liberia, thank you. I'm with you, the African, African-Americans. We know that the diaspora, we've been talking about it for a long time. We are thinking ideas of countries that have already been fired ahead of us. So we've already started, I think you heard the announcement about some of the things that we plan to do. I can assure you, we've opened the way already. There are a lot of African-Americans who have already applied and we are working with them. So we're interested in this and we will work with you. But the doors are open and we are working with it. We want to see, even long before this time of there hasn't been a difficulty for African-Americans to go to Liberia. In the matter, resettlement or settlement, I think we are working on it without hesitation so that we can be able to accommodate all of you. With respect to the issue of the immigration in the United States, you know, over the years, we don't worry about, we've been here, we've been intervening, we've been talking to the congresspeople. But as where it is, our effort as a nation is to work with the authorities here to understand our situation, if not yet, but Liberians alone, but we have to work with it globally. And we've been talking close those to make sure that in our case, as Liberians, knowing very well that this country is a country that will hold dear to us. So we deal with this situation in a way that will be able to bring some understanding. I know you've never been had, I mean, you have not had any air treatment since then, maybe something, as a later case, or with something government to government. There's some close discussions that are going on. And I can assure you, whatever it is, we'll make sure that we talk for your rights and you will work with the government to make sure that the relationship we've had over the years will be respected and that your situation can be there to protect. That's what I can say from there.
Thank you very much. The president will begin again from that end.
Okay. My name is James Perrin, I'm from J C L C, a technology company building, secure login, encryption documents, AI-powered monitoring systems. My mother also has been shipping goods to Liberia for over a decade. We started operations in this January. How can Liberian-owned companies like ours be included in your agenda to protect government data, strengthen digital security, and support trade?
Next question, one day. Remember, the president takes three questions at a time.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, Liberia has missed critical opportunities to rebuild our educational system, particularly during the years 2006 to 2018, when international partners were ready to support us. Do they want common steps is the administration taking to ensure education is no longer an afterthought, but the foundation of our national development strategy?
Hi, Mr. President, my name is Dr. Stella Jeffries. What policies are in place to prioritize Liberian ownership in mining concessions instead of majority foreign control? I recently got a mining license, mining of business, but I'll need the support of the president and the government for Liberia's mining, thank you.
Actually, when I took over about two years ago, we inherited a lot of mine concessions. We have decided to go and renew all of our mining concessions. We want to review them. And we have already a timeline to do that. We we know that mining is quite an expensive express for the mining of some kind, like mining ore, it's something like that. But there are mining areas that Liberians could take. We are losing the balance of dollars to the hands of foreign mining companies. Though we can, we have international laws to apply, we can just come and cancel all the lights. But we have an opportunity to review it, to make them shoot our own conditions and make sure that we are internationally compliant, but at the same time that we know that those miners sections have for Liberia to benefit from them. We don't realize some of the mining, in fact, most of it, they declare losses in Liberia and they profit in their attire of, we know that. And once we can get to that, the opportunities will open for Liberians to participate. At a moment, we have to apply our international laws to respect the concession right that they have. With respect to Liberia, nation opportunities, that's what we're talking about. We missed a lot of opportunities. But again, we're not alone in that. But our determination now in the arrest agenda is to make sure that we come up with programs that will benefit our country. And that's what we're trying to do, that's why we're trying with the diaspora approach. Because in many cases, we have left the diaspora, we have left many people that have talents and skills and resources to rebuild our country. So this is a new opportunity. We've made several. I'll be willing to take the blame for whatever happened in the past. But at least all of us should work together to restore in some of the years that the locals did and that we can begin to work together. This is a new Liberia, this is a new concept. And we've given you the opportunity to be a part of it. I heard the young man talking about AI. By the way, we already have programs of AI going on in Liberia. When we took over, we digitized the country nationally. We launched our digital program. And there are people who are now in the country, training young people who are here and we just, they are blessing for some of you who already have the skills to come and join them. And the doors are open. That's what we're looking for. People with knowledge, skills, to be able to work and new young people. We are the custodian of that and that's why we are coming up. So you see us, you can talk to people around here. In fact, the Minister of Finance, I speak to that.
Yes, I want to focus the president on the issue about business, especially for youth entrepreneurs. Just recently, we worked with the African Development Bank, launched something called the Youth Entrepreneurship Investment Bank. The intention is to support more than thirty thousand group led businesses, entrepreneurs. We mobilized the first seventy million. It's going to scale up over time. And besides, through that initiative, we're working with partners, one of which is the US Development Federation Corporation, the DFC. They intend to scale up support for businesses in Liberia. Just last night, I was in conversation with the US Exempt Bank, FISA. They are interested in supporting folks like you and others who intend to go back home and do business and expand business. So the government is intentional, will try to link some of these initiatives and these institutions to specific individuals who have needs. So we will do that. Please contact us, but if, we're talking about AI. The UNDP and other partners are supporting the introduction, I think, of a new program at a university for AI and some other digital technology courses. It will soon be launched at a university of Liberia.
And I'll just focus some education stats for the questions that came for education. Our AID, the core of it is education. So that tells you the importance that this government has placed on education. And it's costed at $2.3 billion. And so when you heard the president at the UN make the case about the amount of money that we're going to commit, we are committing that, those funds under the AID. And with that, we've been able to secure ninety million from the World Bank and the Global Partnership for Education to transform foundational learning. As I told the country last year, I went classroom to classroom, engaged students. There was a young girl, wrote beautifully on her notebook. And I asked her, read for me what you wrote. She could not read. And in that moment, we decided with the leadership and guidance of the president, that foundational learning was going to be what we use to transform the Liberian education sector. And with that, we've been able to identify eight transformative reforms. Specifically, teacher and administrator upgrading. We know how girls go to school and they drop out of school by sixth, seventh grade. Some of what our young people were talking about earlier. So girls and inclusive education is one of the priority reforms. Technical vocational education to bring skill, work back, blue collar, engagement into our economy. We also are expanding. We also are expanding school supplies, instructional supplies, improving infrastructure, as well as monitoring and supervision in our schools, and improving early grade literacy. So we are going to build, with this 90 million dollars, 100 new schools in Liberia at the foundational level. And those are going to start this year, the end of this year, all until next year. And I think that kind of comprised some quick updates for education.
Well, I just want to make some clarity regarding trade. I'm hearing you talk about trade. And just to let you know that the Ministry of Commerce is deeply into digitizing the system, where we have no bottleneck. We're trying to see how we can get bottleneck out of the way. Whether it's security, whether it's commerce, customs, wherever it is, we're trying to go to first bottleneck as well. And we're trying to see how we can begin by starting at the Liberian Business Registry. That's where you start from. That's the beginning of trade. That's where you begin from, at the Liberian Business Registry. And then later, we go down to the Ministry of Commerce, where we have the entire commercial system, where we try also to digitize that one, also to have you have a speed into whatever you want to do. We're trying to see how we can open space, because any investor, businessman, wouldn't have the time for delay. He would want to, he or she would want to see the process faster than ever before. So we're trying to get rid of paperwork, so that we have you apply, whatever part of the world you may be, to be able to apply and have your IBD, any export permit to have you have it on time. So regarding the trade, talk about the delay. That's what we are doing right now, to see how we can speed up all processes regarding trade. Thank you.
Now you see, when I, as a presidential candidate, we used to come here in town hall meetings, to answer questions. These are our DHL, they are going to keep our promises. Now you're looking at them, in their faces, they're telling you what they are doing, not what you're going to do. And you can take up, everything we do is on the website. You can either the executive mansion website or international website. So we just want to establish that we are ready for this question.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you for speaking, Mr. President. I am Gethsemane Gloria McIntosh, Director of the Center for Public Health Practice, Professor of Public Health and Health Science, and then from work of migrant health doctor. I implore your efforts. I implore your efforts to build our healthcare infrastructure. However, I kindly ask how is... All right, sorry. They would like me to try to work. Sorry. So yeah, as I say, I said, I would like to thank you for engaging with the ICP. I am Gethsemane Gloria McIntosh, Director of the Center for Public Health Practice, Professor of Health Management at the American Public Health Institute, and proudly from this American Health Institute. I implore your efforts to build our healthcare infrastructure. However, I kindly ask the very important, how is your administration ensuring effective coordination centered by the Ministry of Health and Health? Utilizing a public health model that addresses the root causes of poor health, such as adverse childhood experiences, food insecurity, foster childhood, and mental health. Unlike the healthcare model that focuses on treatment again, prevention is better than care. The public health model also reduces the long-term burden for society. If we utilize that effective, growing infectious as epidemic, in a data-driven act. So my question is, how can push from the healthcare model to a public health model as centers of justice, governance, and health? After that, put it to the board. Thank you.
So. So. Please, ladies and gentlemen, ask just your question and be to the point. We don't want the premises so long that we get discombobulated. Okay? So just ask your question. If your question is too long, we're going to cut you off. The lines will now start at that end, and we'll see how far we can go. Or please, if your question has been asked, just leave the line. If you repeat your question, we'll get you off. So ask your question in less than 30 seconds. Go straight to the point. So your question will not loss in transmission. From this line, go ahead, straight to your question.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Mr. President, our mother of Liberian delegates, I just want to bring greetings. Mr. President, I want to bring greetings from Mr. Isaac Wallace, the architect and designer of the Central Bank for Liberia and the first glass building on Crown Hill. My name is Eva Yuboti Wallace, and, Mr. President, it's not a question. We have committed $3 million to the Republic of Liberia. The first project is a digital library. The second is two markets, and we have built in 1 million dollar housing. That will be all in Kenya, because that's where I came from, and that's where we started. I went to the Superior Elementary School in Zulu. I went to the Congo. I write for BWR. I went to LU. I write for American University, Marketing and Finance. And currently, I am at the Columbia University in New York City. I have many lessons for 25 years, and this is my gift to the Republic of Liberia. We are starting from which accounting, I'm from there, and we're going to expand to other counties. So, Mr. President, this is our gift to the Republic of Liberia.
Thank you very much. She gave a gift. So, not consideration. So again, straight to the point. No premise, no prelude, just the question.
Good evening to our father of the land and to our mom. Mr. President, I live near the grassroots leader, and I have talked to so many Liberians who come to my events. I have so many things, but one specific question I came out recently was, based on the initiative your government has taken to bring closure to leaders who pass, you know, in just due to our civil crisis. But this one president in particular is very close to you. One Stanford plaque, his niece was one of the survivor of the massacre at the Lutheran Church. And she has lived out of Liberia for so many years. She lived in the Africa, and she lives in the United States. This lady is asking, those who survived the massacre, as she are doing for past leaders in bringing closure, can they get a closure as well? Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, then one more question, and the President will answer your question again. If you won't give long premise, a prelude will take your mic right in your mouth. You're not even handling the microphone. Please, the father of the lady is here. We're not telling you hello plenty of time. No hello, just come and ask your question. If we have to entertain a lot of people, or else if you ask long questions, it's going to be unaffordable. So just ask your question. Our help us have been directed to pull the mic right in your microphone if you want to hear long story. Yes, sir.
Your excellent answer, Mr. President. My name is Nathaniel Massicore. My question is this. I am among many Liberians throughout the diaspora that are interested in bringing investment to Liberia. One question that has come out amongst some investors is this. What is the Liberian government doing in the area of capital flight to protect the assets that Liberians earn, to ensure that that money earned in Liberia does not flee the country?
Thank you.
Okay, let me just say that the government is doing a whole lot. So the government is doing a whole lot to strengthen the Liberian economy, make it more resilient, and also ensure that money generated from Liberia or significant portion can be used to develop the country. We don't have, we have, we don't have what we call capital controls, which to some extent is seen in many jurisdictions as being one attractive feature of the Liberian economy. But it also has its own drawback, because others have abused it. So as we, as we talk, there are conversations underway. One of the conversations we are on is in the mining sector, especially gold. What we can do to ensure that the significant amount of gold that is being exported from our country, we have significant value coming back. Just recently, the government fielded a delegation, a steady tour, delegation to Ghana and other places. We are trying to adapt a model that those that are mining in those sectors, that the central bank can start to have some gold reserves. We are also contemplating of ensuring that our assets, our minerals are not just taking the raw forms. Refining and adding value is where we are going. So there are investors who are already online, wanting to help us as we try to move from the rudimentary form of just extracting for adding value, not only for gold, but for many other sectors that we have encountered. So there are a lot of things underway. I cannot go in details. But some of you that have the time, can contact us, we'll tell you all that is happening.
Thank Sister Devi, generous offer. Since you're going to do that, Grand Dila is to be a girl, there's a girl. I promise you, I'm going to build a road to Grand Dila. That road is going to be completed, so you can drive safely. And we appreciate people who are giving back to the country. Our job is to monitor the resources, to make sure that it is happening. Grand Dila is one of the most beautiful terrains, and even taking there, we are going to invest. Coco, plantine, and we had some improvement for the area, so we appreciate you. I can assure you, the government will work with you to make sure that your promises are built. Thank you very much. Respect to the issue of people who survive. You know, we set up a committee in the Reed area, and that committee was headed by the Minister of Education. We were able to reach out to family members. What we're trying to do is to expand the committee, to make sure we generate new ideas as to how to make it inclusive, and some of the areas that we needed to. Like the central, the, 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 our well-known Central Street Cemetery, another place anymore. We are thinking about how, what to do with it. So there are many things that we need to do, that we're planning to do, to make the Liberians know that we're serious about bringing the people together. So any ideas you have that are not inclusive in what we're doing, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're giving you cards to write your question. Please, just write your questions when you come in reading. Let's move from that end then.
Hello, my name is Pofilia Nurse Bar. My question is, what is the Liberian government doing to decrease the mortality death rate?
Thank you. And we'll go to the far right. Yes. The microphone, far right. Yes.
Hello, Mr. President, Madam President. My name is Aramenta, Minister Aramenta Kupatutmen. Thank you for your beautiful work, for your beautiful work by the sun. I'm going to be very grateful. My question here today is, what are the government, what are the government doing to implement cleanliness or extend environmental services to order where people can stop to trash their streets, or whether it be inside the facility?
Okay. Thank you. And then one question from this end, and the President will respond.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Mindora Hawadiawara. I have a concern about harassment in the immigration sector in Liberia, across the country. When we travel through the country, there's a lot of harassment. To what extent is your government, immigration, immigration, and customs services, so that when we come home, we can no longer be harassed?
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now allow the President to address the questions.
Well, I think you, this is the, the rest of the end, sanitation is well noted. The reason for that is, we, a developing country, cleanliness has to, cleanliness. Besides that, sanitation is very, very important. If you have gone to Monrovia maybe a year ago, you will see the difference. You will see a Monrovia that is cleaner, but you know, it takes some time to work. Partner, like talking about, I would go about disposing, resources are not just that. Even when I drive along the street, I call the city mayor. In our honesty, you know, Monrovia is much cleaner, but not just Monrovia. We're concerned about the country. So sanitation, very important to us. And we have taken a lot of measures. The city mayors, fortunately, the two city mayors, Big Jay and, and Monrovia are doing a very good job. What they're trying to do is to mobilize resources for, the city, that city was for 350,000 people. I'm putting 1.5 billion people. Not everybody knows what to do, but we are working with it. Can I show you, Monrovia is another move to make it sure that we get rid of all of the things that are hampering us, like you look in Monrovia, people build everywhere. So you have flooding, you have, it takes time to get rid of these. you have flooding, you have, it takes time to get rid of these. We just had to tell you that, if you're patient with us, we do everything possible that part of our, on the line of the harassment in immigration, it is, it is a fight. We discovered the echo was leaving, because if we talk about eating crossbar trade, we can't do it without harassment. And you know very well that to get rid of things, not overnight. I am trying to put into place measure up, that I, I mean, the R I E, where we have cameras, because I hate for Liberians to go and feeling that they're going home, they have been welcomed, not then being harassed. The point would be way back, maybe they treat foreigners even better. But I can assure you, these are the measures we're taking. We cannot always be making promises, we are making effort, we are trying, we inherited a lot. And most of those people in there, yeah, somebody will be begging for them. Oh, you know, they get a job and so forth, they have to take costs to make costs. So gradually, the discipline is coming to play. Sometimes the people also, somebody who are not even on payroll. I used to say, we tend to pay the people that return to work. So we will put the right people there, pay them the right salary, and make sure, do the right, and make promises to them. I'll hear something about maternity, eh? Huh? Maternity? I want to hear.
My turn.
Your rights, your rights. My question was, how they're gonna decrease the rates?
Oh, maternity, I mean, that is true. We improve essential services delivery, we also have increased the availability of essential medications, with included skilled birth attendants, added diagnostics tools like ultrasound machines to the hospital care, and additional ambulances, a number of 25 will be added to our fleet in January. So these are just some of the minimum aspects that we are taking into consideration.
Besides that, the Minister of Health is not here, but we know that the support in the health sector is given up. If you go across the country, we are not where we, where we want to be, but we are not where we were in 2024, general. Drug supply, because all the hospitals has improved materially. JFK has improved materially. The service fees have improved. We are trying to ensure, and we're ensuring now that we have constant electricity. One of the sectors that was badly hit, by the UCA, called, was the health sector. The biggest donor was UCA, but the government intervened. The fact that things have not reversed was on account of government's intervention. We've also increased the salaries of health workers across the country. You know, you are seeing health workers in, how do you call it, Donba Hospital, CP Donba Hospital celebrating, because the quality of health, health workers have improved because of government incentivizing. So while things that is happening is that drug supply is constant across all the hospitals, all the county health systems are being given supplies on time, logistics, medical equipment, and the new budget that we are crafting, the health sector is going to, the support is gonna increase. I just wanted to say something shortly on harassment. We agreed, thanks to the performance contract we signed with the president, we agreed something that is called service charter. What we said we would do, each ministry, the director general, the cabinet, uh, that part would coordinate that. We at the Ministry of Finance, the F, our, the Liberian Revenue Authority, you know, the revenue department was under the Ministry of Finance before, now it is autonomous, but we coordinate, there's a goal that the Ministry of Finance is on. One of the things we promised in our service charter we're about to roll is suggestion and complaint boxes that we install at the Ministry of Finance, and the director general, the commissioner general, the director, we also ensure that wherever custom people are at, people will have opportunity to complain. It's not gonna be boxes only, but we're gonna have outlines where if you interact with our people and the port you go to put on the wall for staffs, you can have means to complain. And we will take your complaint, and we'll act on it, and we'll act expeditiously. So you're gonna see that happening, it's part of the things we promised, the director general cabinet, and we are gonna be great at all of it. So when we roll it out, we inform you, you will know how to contact us directly, the numbers, and you have boxes at places that you just act, so that when you have any issue with anyone, you can write a complaint, and that complaint will be seen, but no less than a minister or the head of the entity and others involved. Thank you.
Let me, uh, stay in the, let you see these happening. We're fighting corruption, we're increasing accountability, we're not playing with them, we're not going back on that. We want to make sure that resources are there, they are, for the good of the country. And you, you can hear what is going on in Liberia. We are getting rid of people who intend to leave for your past lives, but people who intend to leave the Robinus, man, they will not survive. And we have to make our country a country that is able, as we've already been doing, we have won the confidence of the owners and partners, we have been very transparent. It will take a while, but I can assure you, Liberia is on the move, make it a country in trust, a country that is working, you create the opportunities. That's why we're telling you, you are part of that, you join them, but also people who come to the country, the countries, to make themselves available, must make sure that they're willing to work with the laws of the country, willing to make sure that they have country work for the good of the people. Thank you very much.
So let me, uh, let me say this, please do not join the line again. We have this space for time, and we have to be time perfectly. So please, ask your question, respect to your question, please. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Roland Perry, I report for the Homeland TV. Mr. President, my question is, when you recently, when you established your government, you based on this measure, uh, the LTA, and people are complaining in America and saying that you are not respecting the law, and I know you to be a law abiding person, I'd like to know, why did you dismiss those people in contra, I mean, in contravention to the law of the country, like many people are saying? Is there anything that you are reliable or some of the law?
Thank you, sir. Next person, this will roll.
My name is like the gentleman, and my question is, why is there a big difference between the government and not have direct office in the various counties of, uh, the district to discriminate if open and applying for?
Thank you. Why don't the legislators have offices in their various constituencies?
Thank you, Mr. President, for this event, and to you and your staff for hosting. What is the Liberian government's plan for eliminating child selling on the streets of Monrovia in the country and more?
Talking about LTA dismissal, I can assure you, I dismiss anyone without going through due process. And the way it happens is that, there are a lot of people we inherited, have tenure, but have a tenure, respect, but if we find out that you're doing something wrong, we tend to work to, have a C C, which is our intelligence institution, will do the investigation. We find out that, uh, they come with a recommendation, we have, but we do not, if this people legally do it according to the laws of the country. Now, there are many people who have had cases that are pending, and that's why we start with suspension, give you a chance to defend yourself, you're not convincing, whether you have tenure or not, if the law says that, you're not a job, sorry, you have to take it because of something that you found out. And now, we respect the legislators, uh, some of them do have offices in their counties, but that's the reason we're saying that we use our resources well, to make the counties accessible. You know, you can have a legislator trying to go to a county for three days, they can't get there. But when we begin to open up the country, build a road, we are not in position to demand that they do it, the citizens can do it, because they are the ones who elected them. And I think it's fair proper that they have offices there. Most of the legislators, uh, when they are in session, uh, out of session, sometimes they go home, sometimes they don't, it is not the executive that asked them to do so. But again, I think some of the legislators do have offices in the county, that I know.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
No, I just wanted to, on the LTA thing, I just wanted to, there was a question, sorry, the question that was asked, nobody were dismissed from LTA. The commissioners that were at LTA, all of them resigned their position.
And they didn't resign from a then with P E, or whatever tenure that, that benefited from. Liberia is a country that believe in the rule of law, that's what we do.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Because of time, the president has come, able leftists, I will answer most of your questions, but for now, the president has to be going, so we're taking only four more questions. For the president, direct your question for the president. If you have any question about EPA, about health, about education, the leftists are here, they will address the question. But for now, all the four questions directly to the president, please, straight to the point. Yes?
Hi, Mr. President, my name is Edgar, and straight to the point, how is the president leveraging the 400 years law that the United States passed to increase tourism in Liberia, and also regarding the, um, environmental protection in the mining sector?
Thank you. Environmental protection expert will answer that question right here, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, my name is Yoroy Scott from Woodbury, Minnesota, I'm the president for, uh, the CEO of, hold on, Quantum Location Services. My question is actually for a doctor, Jack. There's too much variance within the education sector within Liberia. Have you ever thought about having regional educational hub, like boarding schools, so all the students can go there, and we can be able to tailor all our resources to them toward a?
Thank you. That question will be answered by the, the education minister. Let's go. Question for the president?
When will that drop, they will still processing factory to make steel from iron?
Thank you. What a short, beautiful question.
Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity, I'm your friend's daughter, so thank you for the moment, letter's daughter. My question is, we have a lot of mental health professionals working and helping out in Liberia, where are your seasoned addiction and substance use disorder professionals? I am here to help. I have national, international, state recognition, what does that mean? Not to boast, it's for me to help my people. I want a conversation with you because of its impacts, can we please put, from education to our finances, to help our situation in Liberia, because it impacts all areas?
Thank you. So those will be the questions for the president, we will answer them after that. The panel is here, and they will answer all your other questions, we're trying to buy as much time as possible, as the president.
Here are the Ministry of Education, we talked about opening school, a brand we have for them. Maybe we respect to ask for, that's what we call, skills. You said you're gonna talk with us, so maybe before we leave, I don't know, or leaving tomorrow, we have a chat over there. The Minister of Finance, uh, Economic and I S O, over here, they are available. Environmental protection, think, even with respect to our climate issue, there are somebody here for him, the EPA, I think, yeah, okay, as an expert, maybe you can address.
Thank you. Um, environmental issue more generally, the EPA is responsible to manage to involve them. Under this president, we don't quite so job, there's still some more to go. Uh, in terms of enforcing the law, like we're talking about waste management first, you need to have a policy in place. We supported the city government, we have a policy in place as to how to manage to waste. That policy is private sector driven, and a lot of Liberians are taking advantage of it now. Other areas, in terms of enforcing companies to abide by the law, if you follow the work of the EPA in recent time, under the administration, companies are now following the law. Why? Because if they don't follow the law, we fine them. In 2024, we imposed 1.2 million dollar fine on companies. Some of them could not even operate because they can't afford to pay the fine because they are in violation. When it comes to climate change, this is where the opportunity is for business, carbon market. There's a whole science we can go through here, we don't have the time, but the idea is, if you have more, if you want more information, contact us in terms of carbon market. The policy is almost ready. Waste management, we don't research on the wind tunnel, you can generate methane gas, not only that you sell that gas, you can generate carbon market from it. We're relevant Liberians to take advantage of the opportunity in the environmental sector. The whole climate finance, everything is about innovation, renewable energy, if you plan to invest in renewable energy, part of that is, not only that you make real money for selling electricity, you also get carbon trading. When it comes to price management, so a lot we are doing in terms of environment, environmental health for the country, and we get asking other people to join us. To, to be told, we have gotten a lot of support from the president in terms of enforcement. Even if a company does not want, they have been, time, I'll go and see him, say we can top it in this country, we can enforce the law, go and enforce the law. And we are enforcing the law, epa.gov.lr, it's very active, go there, you'll get a lot of information about the environment situation of Liberia. Go there, you'll get a lot of information about the environment situation of Liberia. Thank you.
With respect to all the steel, our agreements now, concession agreement that we're working on. I want to make sure the company that qualify be able not just to extract the iron ore, take it out of the country. They must be in position to make sure that they will be able to get value addition by making sure there'll be a steel there, make sure jobs are created locally for our people. We not buy any more new concessions, take our minerals and they'll take them out of the country. Some of people will know there'll be a delay, but we have the barriers. They have to work with us. So if you see there are delays in concession agreements, some of the delays are to make sure. There are people who are going to stick to the rule, want to make sure. We cannot benefit from just taking iron ore and exporting. But we are working on that. We are not talking about agreements that I went there before we talked over. But we are making sure that the new humans in compliance with what this country is going to do, to move it and it is. I want to just show you, this is what we're working on. It's in the gold sector, in the iron ore sector. You hear about so many minerals that have been so far discovered, like diamond thing. We have the ideas hard to work to make sure that we can maximize benefits greatly. Thank you.
I just want to answer questions. I think somebody asked about children selling in the streets. The Ministry Agenda has initiated a program to get street children out of the streets. It is an interministerial collaboration with the L N P and the Ministry of Education as well as Ministry of Justice. And what that program is doing is taking kids from the streets, bring them back home to whether they are counties of Oregon, then the Ministry of Education would get them in school. L N P will find the families that these kids are selling for and the laws will be applied. So the Ministry Agenda has really owned this project. And matter of fact, she was there with one of our partners that are supporting the government in running this program through the Ministry Agenda. Regarding the question on variance, yes, we have realized the learning challenges that we have in the country. You look at the latest data on literacy rates for Liberia, we're under 48%. And that's alarming. But how do we do that? It's not only building dormitories, it's first building the teacher quality infrastructure. Because if we get the teacher quality infrastructure built, we will then have the kids in school. Our recent data that we just assessed, there were seven counties that we have our students not in school. Seven counties that we saw poor performance across the W I A C, the West African exams, whether it was at the third grade level or the sixth grade level. So all of these assessments have been done. And this is why the 90 million that we spoke about earlier is going to help us address some of these issues. One, learning assessments will be part of the program at third grade, that our students from kindergarten to third grade, before they get to fourth grade, we need to know that they learn what they need to know. And then at the sixth grade level, and that's the scaffold we're building before we expand to now regional hubs. Currently, our structure for education is structured that way. Each county has a county education office, officer, and we have 125 district education officer, that officers that help us run the education sector in a decentralized format. So it's a scaffold that we're building. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Please remain in your lines. Nobody else is going to want to thank you. His Excellency, President Jese Yuma Bouakai. We have some pressing engagements. The president will, and the First Lady will now leave us. Thank you very much. The staff, he's going to sit down. And then you continue the questions and direct your questions to any of the ministers here and then they will answer your question. Be right in applause for the president and be right in applause for you for conducting yourself so beautifully. President will now retire. Please remain seated. We'll continue our engagements with our ministers. We want to guarantee, we are committed to making sure your questions are answered. So don't sit in line, remain in line, your questions will be answered. That's our guarantee. We will now call on the stage the Honorable Minister of Information, Culture Affairs and Tourism. To be seated on the stage, occupy a little seat, the Honorable General Leader Matthew Pia. Because a lot of questions are now coming. And Legal Advisor of Fujifilm Keita came in on the stage. A representative from the National Court Authority, Executive Administration, please step on stage. Okay. Please be seated. We'll now continue. We'll continue the town hall, please be seated. Please be seated. If you are asking a question, just make sure you direct your question to the official of government. And disabled students or toddlers of school needs, he must undertake a measure. Please turn the video down. Please. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And be seated, please. Be seated. Judge Lobo, you're behind for the question, right? Or we just have from you? Okay, go ahead. We'll begin from here. Your question, please. Okay, let's go to that end. Your question.
Good evening. My name is Laito Hawakun, as the Laito of National Practice, and questioning, what steps your administration taking to ensure that advanced projects, registered nurse, train abroad have their licenses recognized and accredited in Liberia? So that we can practice under full scope of our training and help strengthen the modern healthcare system?
Thank you. This round.
Thank you. I hope everyone can hear me. Hi, excuse me. I feel like I'm an ambassador of Africa in the California Congressional Black Caucus delegation and the International Association of African American Ambassadors in the continent of African Middle East. My question to you and to your ministers, first of all, I think it's a disrespect for the president to leave when we're in the midst of question. Number second is, the question is, why isn't that the California Congressional Black Caucus delegation, who celebrated Liberia in 1994, who's been trying to help Liberia, have not been received and helped even as this day? When we're trying to get you to come to California, meet the governor and all of the black members in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Far right in. Far right.
My question to the president is that, okay, my question to the president is that, you have asked us to come, I'm a retired engineer, I work in the area of roads drainage, I work in stormwater and traffic engineering. My wife, Dr. Wallace, is have a doctorate degree in education. The last time we saw the Capitol Building was on fire. We saw the Capitol, this is the question, we saw the Capitol Building on fire. We see our representative members are fighting. How do you want us to come, whether say your administration is doing to ease down the tension, to give us the peace to come home and know that everything will be okay?
Thank you. Information Minister, sir, let me clear.
All friends, once again, I would like to ask you to come and answer. But honestly, before answering that question, there is something I want all of us to pay attention to. Maybe we pay attention. During the elections.
Hello, can we be quiet, please? Hello? Please, let guys have respect here, please. Can we be quiet?
During the elections, when we were pushing President Bouacar for the presidency, there were all kinds of myth. About what was happening to him, how he committed that, how he dead body. And I'm wondering whether we pay attention to the fact that when we started this town hall, the folks here came to the president, they brought chair behind him, or is he a sinner? He said no. He stood on his feet here until he left. What that means is that you have a president who is elected, who is well, and who's managing the country well for all of us. I just want to point that out. And chief, about your question about people fighting, will you encourage people to fight, right? It was a bad thing for people to bring the capital. But when you put out something like that, as though the place you had, nothing that happening? I was right in this country before I remember Liberia to be a government official. Your all was standing ready, it was live on TV. Your Capitol building was going wrong. You see that one? Don't worry, commentary, yes. But when you happy here, you're trying to rape it, you're sorry. The small one happened outside in Liberia. So those, yeah, listen now, fighting, when you see lawmaker fighting in the French parliament, in the British parliament, all places. They can have to debate anything, gathering the parliament, they were throwing chairs at each other, right? That should not be a reason why we would not want to go back to our country without fighting. That's the point I wanted to make. Because everywhere you go, including here, the worst thing happen, but if you throw everybody to land on Red Bank in Monrovia, they will get free, they start to come to America. The whole country is still one camp. So it's just law for country for me that can drive us to our home. We can never violate each other, let's not treat this, let's not causing trouble, let's not spoil the company name. But you only change it if you break yourself, pardon me. So we say encourage you to come, irrespective of what is happening. Is that okay? Thank you, sir.
Hello. I'm the Vice Consul of Congo, Charles D F Congo the Second, I'm from the Ministry of Justice. I'm speaking to the individual that asked the question about the Capitol building. When that occurred, it was determined that a crime was committed. The individuals are currently on trial. It speaks to the fact that Liberia is a country of law, so it not just a country of men. A crime, it was determined that a crime was committed. Individuals, I think about 14 of them were indicted, they are currently on trial. Thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, but time is fast thing. We all live here and we know that, you know, wherever we rent, we have time limit. So it will take the next few minutes to just pick three, three questions to be able to wrap this up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but next year, we'll do it better. Thank you so much. Please pick three questions, please.
Thank you. My name is Ada Hash Williams. I live in Herndon, Virginia. Hello. My question is, Liberians have to travel all over the world to get to Liberia. There was a time when Delta Airline used to go to Liberia and American Airlines from here. Is there anything the government is doing to bring Delta back to Liberia or any United States airline? Thank you.
Thank you. On the far right, no, this lady, in the far right, please.
Okay, good evening. My name is Grace. And I'm not sure who I'm going to direct this question to since the president is no longer here. But I trust that somebody on the stage will be able to answer. So many, there are Liberians that are very concerned about fraud, waste and abuse within the government, not just this government, but in past governments. So what I want to understand is what is the current administration doing to address that? And how can we ensure that key essential workers such as healthcare workers, teachers, are paid adequately so that they can be able to serve their country? Because you're currently underpaid.
Far right.
Hello, hello. My question is to the EPA. If there are serious things happening in Liberia, erosion. And if we're going to have tourism, the erosion of our beaches need to be stopped. At either one, I went back home and opened a business. The beaches is taking our, our property, investment. What are we going to do to stop sand mining is destroying our country? Thank you.
Okay, far right. Far right. Far right. Yes.
Hi, my name is Grace Esposito. My question is, what are the government's plans?
Please put the microphone under your mouth.
Okay, hi, can you hear me now? My question is, what are the government's plans to ensure people access to justice, particularly regarding public defenders and legal aid in Liberia?
Thank you. Equal access to justice. We now give the panel the opportunity to address your questions.
Okay, I will start with the last question. There is a current legal aid policy. There was an effort inaugurated by the U N D P to have a legislation on legal aid. It will be evenly opposed at the Ministry of Justice, and this is the reason. There are these current regimes in place in Liberia for legal aid.
There is already regimes in place in Liberia for legal aid. The judiciary has the public defender program, that's an effective legal aid. The Libra Bar Association has a legal aid clinic. EFL has a legal aid clinic. There are another, there is another NGO called Voice has a legal aid clinic. What we encourage UNDP to do is to support these institutions in order to expand those programs, but not to create a national legal aid, uh, 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 not to legislate a national legal aid that will create an institution that will not have money to sustain. I will also attend the issue pertaining to the sand mining. At the moment, uh, for quite some time now, Ministry of Mines and Energy impose a moratorium and sand mining. Most of the constructions that are going on in Liberia, they say that I use in those construction, I have on the rivers, on the rivers. It's a little late tonight, they will lift the moratorium on the seventh location. There are individuals that are still doing illegal sand mining. They are, so sometimes it is necessary, if you have a property that is on a mine by that initiative, you need to report that to Maritime or the Ministry of Justice or the Ministry of Mines and Energy.
Let me just, the, the whole erosion question, ladies and gentlemen that ask the question, very beautiful question in term of erosion, just to attest on that a little bit. But it's important because I want to be looking at him with that. Oh, okay. The erosion, okay, the erosion question. We have with me one minute. In term of erosion, what is causing erosion? We are getting increased erosion due to global warming. Global warming, the earth is getting warmer. As it get warmer, they not fall in the soft pool of ice. The ice is melting, the volume of the ocean is increasing. It's global warming that is contributing to it more than anything else. To give you an example, we are currently on a coastal development project in Saino. Those who know, we live, the Mississippi Street is almost gone. In May, I went there to break the ground. In September, when I went back, the coconut trees, where we broke the ground, the coconut tree was gone. So it's global warming, our responsibility. If we having the discussion at the UN, at the resort, we go and advocate on behalf of the project to say those of us who are contributing less to global warming are feeling the impact. And so, we want to get some money, about twenty-five million dollars project to defend West Point, because if not do so, West Point will be washed away. It's currently ongoing in Saino and many places, but Justin already addressed the mining, there's a moratorium on it, but it's going to be real. And that is also a part of the reason. So erosion is our responsibility, so that we keep the temperature down. It's a whole for the government, I would not do more to it than that. For the last three questions, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Robert Nunez, and my question goes to the Minister of Education. My question goes to the Minister of Education. Madam Minister, uh, some part of last year, I saw you drive around the country, doing some assessment of our schools. And during most of the town hall meetings, one of the issues they raised was shutters of seats in the classroom. I think that informed the president's decision to launch the one child cheer policy. But before we do that, my wife and I have been living there for more than a month, or a week, recently. How do you incorporate our inter-site?
Thank you. How do you incorporate it? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Janine Goye. I'm the daughter of Associate Justice Jana Lee Manuel Rier, deceased, and Emily Dix Ria, proprietor of Alhav Memorial Preparatory School. The concern I have pertains to human capital. Sustainable recovery will require more than just instituting economic reforms. Our country has struggled in terms of adopting a set of national values to guide us to patriotism, discipline, and abiding by the rules of law. So my question is, what concrete steps are being taken under His Excellency Joseph Mabwaka's government to ensure that through meditation, governance, and spirit engagement, we as a nation set a moral benchmark that rewards patriotism, discipline, and sacrifice at all levels? Sure, progress, we have needs and for make our nation is sustained.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is the Liberidian Television Network. As you've been watching our town hall meeting with the president of Liberia and his officials, this has been, or this, this is the third day of a three-day conference for Diaspora Librarians to be able to engage with the government of Liberia. You so many interview, now I think it's very important that we bring you the interview of the men behind all of this, the host of this, the organizer of this, so we can have a brief question. Dr. Don, welcome to the Liberidian Television Network.
Thank you, thank you. It's really a pleasure, um, to be speaking with you, and thank you for what you have done with us this weekend. You've come, you've, uh, extended our message to a very large network, and we appreciate your professionalism, your creativity, and, and just the fact that you thought this important enough to spend three days with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This has been three days of a lot of different activities. Uh, we had investors, entrepreneurs here had the opportunity to engage the, the president. Your overview today is the conclusion of everything. Just give us your overview of what you have observed and you organized is, how do you feel now that we're here?
Well, I, I, I say that, uh, going into anything of this, of this nature, you have what we call the best laid plans, and sometimes you don't know how it's all going to come out. But I'll have to say that I'm very pleased with the, with the outcome of the planning process and the execution of what we have planned over these many months. But for us, the success of these deliberations cannot be, uh, uh, defined just by the smooth operation, by the speeches, by the cameras and the lights, and by the festivities. For us, the success comes based on the implementation of all of the conversations that we've had. And so, I'm very, 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 uh, proud of the work we've done. I am excited for the energy that we created and the hope that we have birthed into the participants. Our desire now is that we, we go out with this same kind of energy to become transformers in societies and communities all across Liberia. So for us, that will be the ultimate success. But if you're asking me about, you know, the outcome of the planning process, I would say I am very, 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 very delighted for what has happened, you know?
Thank you, thank you very much. I don't want to hold you too long, so I'll just ask you just two more questions. You know, just on today, a lot of people, uh, I mean, it was a thrilling event, but a lot of people were not left happy because they came here for, or to ask the president, the president, their own personal questions, but the president left and a lot of people were still on the line, they were not happy. So how do you speak to the diaspora's organization, the next one, or how can this be improved?
Well, you, you can understand, I mean, if we want to be fair, uh, you in, you in the press, there has never been a presidential press conference where any president have answered all of the questions. And I think, I think I can confidently speak from a position of experience. His Excellency came and he answered as many questions as he physically could. Now, we have to understand that most of these questions, while he is the president, we have entrusted him to appoint a committed, well-trained, and professional staff that we call captain members. As you can see, the, many of them are here. Education is here, commerce is here, justice is here, uh, three of his advisors are here, the Director General of the Captain is here, his Head of Diaspora Affairs is here. So the point I'm making is, we are all here to respond to the concerns of our fellow citizens. Don't get me wrong, their questions are very, very important, else they would not have come. But let, let's also understand that the president, no president, you know, can take all of these questions. Plus, he has been with us all three days. You've been covering, you know, uh, uh, the, the conference. He was out for Friday, Saturday, and he's, he was with us in church this morning, and he was with us here this afternoon. So, uh, I, I'm, I, I am pleased with the level of commitment that the president has shown towards the conference. And just his, the fact that he was here with us, he was up for well over an hour answering questions, when many of us were concerned about his stamina, he proved that he has the endurance to do that. But again, to those persons who, but as you can see, we're in the hall, and, and questions have still been asked, questions have still been answered. So no one can leave and say that when the president left, he shut the press conference down, all right? But I, I, I can, I can, I can understand that people want to speak with the president directly.
Thank you very much.
But you also understand that, that, that he has limited, you know, uh, availability to answer all the questions.
Thank you very much. Just one final question, and then I will give you the opportunity to say one final words. Now, let's talk about the fourth estate. You know, it's a very vital path in disseminating information. Now, we've seen the, we've seen a lot of journalists from Liberia, from different media institutions, here present, who's I must applaud because the organizers and the government of Liberia. But what about the fourth estate here in the diaspora? What are you doing to further engage the media, the fourth estate here in the United States so that everyone can be involved and have full participation? And these events, the presidential town halls, are usually hosted by media institutions? So are you taking that, or what do you think about that? And are you taking that into consideration for all that, just in the future?
Well, I, I, I don't want to, uh, assume that I, I understand the, the organized press outlets within the diaspora. So I would like to know, one, if there is a, um, association, um...
Aja.
So you do have an association of, 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 of Liberian media in the diaspora? So that, that's good, that's good to know. So I think in the future, that's the, that's the, that's the, uh, outlet we should use to engage the, the media, yeah?
This is the Liberidian Television Network. This is a media, uh, media institution in, in, in Philadelphia. We will cover, we do stuff all around the United States.
Correct, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, but there is an association too, but I was, my question was directly, how can we get the fourth estate more involved here in the diaspora so that events like this, media institution here can have full presence and full engagement with the organizers?
Well, and that's what I'm saying, we will have to be, we have to coordinate that through your national association. Because, um, as you know, it's difficult to, to, to engage, you know, all of the different media institutions individually. I mean, I was introduced to you guys because you reach out to me, all right? And, and let's also understand that, that this conference is the first of its kind, all right? It's the very first one. So obviously, there's some learnings, you know, even though I think the planning is extremely well, but the very fact that you have, uh, informed me that you are a part of a larger association, uh, informs me now that in the future, rather than me trying to find, you know, one-on-one here, we can go through this, 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 this association and invite as many as possible. So engaging the fourth estate is with, is, is a no-brainer. You cannot get your message out without engaging, you know, uh, the, the, the media.
Thank you, thank you very much. Let me just give you the opportunity, it's been a pleasure speaking with you. Let me give you the opportunity to say your final words.
Well, let, let me, for, for those of you who are watching, uh, uh, this, this news network, let me say thank you for, for tuning in, thank, uh, the support that you have given us, uh, with your, your presence. Let me invite you, if you were not able to be with us, the issues that we discussed here over these last three days are issues that all of us should be concerned about. Liberia is one country, that's the only country we have, and we invite you to join the efforts that we have initiated, to go back home and work with our government to, to create an impact for society. Government can't do it alone. Government has reached out to us in the diaspora. So let us find ways to partner with government, and in so doing, we can create a wholesome society once and for all. Like I always say, Liberia belongs to us, and we belong to Liberia. So let us join our hands together and, and work with government to ensure a just, a wholesome, and a healthy Liberian society. God bless you, and I hope, uh, to see some of you as we continue to engage. This is not the end of our engagement, this is just the beginning. So I look forward to working with you. Our website, our website is still up and running, our eight hundred number is still available, our email address is still there, so you can look up us on libdiasproconf.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Don, for speaking with us. It's a pleasure. And guys, if you're watching us, the program is still going on behind us, so please, I would kind of like you to rejoin the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Lester.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. If you ask us, uh, I want to say a special thank you for this opportunity. I personally regret not being here, uh, yesterday. I would love to be a part and to form a part, part of that panel. I bring you greetings from De Kalabach. Uh, De Kalabach is the largest open-air restaurant in Liberia. We contribute a lot, our taxes, pay taxes, we employ up to a hundred and forty persons. And, uh, we are, we are, we are currently, uh, carrying on an expansion project, uh, and we're looking at employing another thirty persons to help run that. I want to say a special thanks to, uh, our government people for organizing, joining with the rest of the organizers in bringing together this beautiful forum. I believe it's a good start, good initiative. Uh, the space is open for us. Uh, Liberia is still a virgin country, but a whole lot of gaps to be filled. So I, I believe, uh, this is a good starting point for the diaspora. Uh, there's a lot of expertise here. I can tell you some of the challenges we have running a restaurant. Some of the challenges we have is proper staff, quality staffing. Uh, there are very few hospitality schools, and even at that, those schools do not have the kind of quality that is standardized. Uh, and if we can look in that, into that area as well, establishing these, uh, uh, quality institutions, and they, we're looking at accreditation from the Ministry of Education. We believe that... we believe that that will go a long way in providing quality staffing for our institutions. A lot of people go to restaurants and they complain that the staff are receptive and they're not getting the kind of service that they desire. We've tried on our own, you know, with hiring some expertise from the United States. We've managed to bring in a consultant who has helped us in developing our staff. So there's in-house training for our staff and we're trying to do a little better than what a typical Liberian institution would do. But there's a lot more to do. There's great opportunity in the tourism area. And I would advise that some of the interests from the diaspora to look at tourism. There's a lot of opportunity, there's a lot of space, and it's open to every Liberian. One thing I would like us to do, and I want to leave this with you, is to, when we hear that a Liberian is doing something, let's get concerned and get passionate about it. Let's love when our colleagues are doing well. It's best to hear that, oh, Lester is somewhere and he's doing something, support him. And we are open to criticism. As long as it's constructive, we are open to criticism. Someone said to me one time that if you're running a restaurant and someone walks up to you and say, hey, you have a problem in this particular area, consider it as a gift because that person could have left quietly and went and spread out some bad news about you. So if the person is good enough to come to you and say, hey, you need to do something about this area, take it as a gift because otherwise it would have been detrimental to you. So I want to thank you again for this opportunity. Time is fast spent. I know most of you are ready to go, but nice to meet you. My name is Lester, one of five, is, if you want to know anything about doing business in our sector, contact me, I'm willing to, I'm open to answering questions and to adding more of what we do to our country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lester. We are very proud of you, Lester. T Kalabach all the way.
Did you know one in four patients who take opioids long-term become addicted? Opioids are strong pain medications like oxycodone, hydrocodone, or morphine. They can help with pain, but they can also lead to addiction and overdose. Take the medication only the way your doctor tells you to take it and never share them with your family, friends, or neighbors. Know the risks, stay safe. This message is brought to you by the Multicultural Community Family Services in partnership with LRTM.
And good night. It has been great having you. Time is fast spent. We've had a wonderful three-day engagement and we hope that this energy that engaged it is just the beginning. Because if we do nothing else, if we do nothing else, let us sleep well of Liberia. If we do nothing else. Let us wash our dirty laundry home. Don't use social media to denigrate ourselves and our country. Let us sleep well of Liberia. Thank you. My colleagues from government, thank you for hanging there with us. For those who traveled this week, may God's traveling mercies go with you. I hope you have a sense that we in the diaspora want to work with you, want to partner with government. Let us forge this partnership that what is laid there before us, that together we rise. My friends, thank you for being here tonight. May God bless you, may God go with you. I understand there's some refreshments and then we give you the versions, but the talking is over. Safe journey home and good night.
They say refreshment, but they already feeling the food. Not a while ago, yeah, they put them well there, they papa, they started eating, oh, they food. Oh, we have to ask for more support than what they complain. Andrew, can we have our benediction, please? Please, let's stand for our benediction. Why is it, uh, champion? Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. You help God, amen? God is good. You are God, you are not a man. You are big, big, big God, God, God. God is big for us in this community, amen? Your Ahair, your Abu say, more support, but I would say extreme support, amen? Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord. We glorify your name and your presence. The Spirit of God is upon us, upon this community, upon the diaspora, upon our nation. He has anointed Liberia to preach good times into the meat and to set the captives free. Father, as you are here, for your people, turn again the captivity of Sino. Pour your spirit upon our flesh. As we gather for the three days, you, God, you will make the increase. You, God, you will enter into all discussions. It's not only about good English, it is by the prosperity and the greatness of this nation, Liberia. The Bible says Exodus 322. Now he shall come to pass, now he will give these people favor, he will give Liberia favor in the sight of the Gentians. And those that have come here, you are not going empty. You are not going empty because you are going to preach good times and you are going to explain through the Holy Spirit what this conference was all about. Take your place now in individual lives. Take your place now in the light of these people that have come, the ministers gave us travel passes so that you, God, will take the glory. Because the Bible says in Psalm 24, whoever is the law and the fullness thereof, the war and death are done therein, for he hath fallen upon his feet and established upon his laws. Who shall ascend into the hands of the law? Somebody said, he that hath clean hands and a pure heart, who hath never his soul deviated, but swiped his people away. You shall receive the blessing of the Lord in the name of Jesus. All he gets, enter with prosperity, enter with peace, with mercy for Liberia. Oh, set the children free, all the homeless people in Zogos and those that don't have anything for law, you are the endless supplier. You make way that where there is no way, touch with your consuming fire and let that be liberty. In the love of liberty of Liberia, God brought us here. So may the peace of God passes over us, understanding, rest upon you, upon your family, today, now, and forever. Someone that believes, say amen? Thank you, Jesus, God bless you. Thank you very, very much. Yeah, Mama, you can really love you. Thank you for coming, God bless you. Save, drive home. Thank you and God bless you.